I'm calling the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Present.
Commissioner Tippett?
Present.
Commissioner Wisman?
Here.
Commissioner Sauer?
Here.
Mayor May?
Here, we do have a quorum present and this is a special work session. Let's see, do we have some comments for the agenda items?
I do, Mayor. I have one public comment, citizen's comment, and then I also have a letter of support. So I don't, want me to read both of them or?
Um, I guess.
I have a question, Mayor. Um, was that letter of support sent to all of us earlier than, earlier today or yesterday? Is that the one we're talking about, Ms. Ms. Maxwell?
It's the one I forwarded out earlier today.
Yeah, yeah, okay, let's, let's, let's read them both, okay?
Okay. All right, all right, city clerk.
Okay, so the first one is the letter of support. This is from Nicole Conkle. And she says, "I strongly support the hiring of a staff preservationist and I'm asking this board to please support this position too. Many recurring and ongoing concerns before the city need to be addressed by qualified professional preservationist on staff with the authority to decide when their input is necessary. Just to name a few city projects and concerns that would benefit from the input of a professional preservationist, AR staff reports, murals, historic district surveys and guidelines, Broadway Bridge, Fort Hill at Leslie Morris Park, city comprehensive and parks master plan updates, and consulting party representation for projects involving federal funds. Thank you for your time and consideration of this comment, Nicole Conkle."
Thank you.
And the next is a citizen's comment, and this is from Mr. John Carlton. It says, "Good evening, Mayor May and Commissioners. I'm writing in support of the creation and immediate hiring of a historic preservation officer position for the city of Frankfurt. Just as history has not always been kind to the city, the city has not always been kind to history. In the last 70 years, more than half of the blocks in downtown Frankfurt have been demolished and other historic buildings within other blocks have been demolished as well, often with little regard to possibilities available to preserve and/or adaptively reuse them, permanently destroying parts of our collective community and cultural history in the process. As we learned with the Blanton-Creacher House and Fort Hill incidents, there are other historic structures and cultural resources outside of Frankfurt's designated historic districts that deserve protection and consideration. The recent discussions on the Blanton-Creacher House, historic structures on Fort Hill, the trolley tracks discovered on East Main and recently Second Street, the mural ordinance, efforts to save the Broadway Bridge, the public waterworks at Cove Spring, and Hayden Station at Capital View Park have only served to underscore this fact. Some of these resources which are currently not captured by historic districts or local historic landmark designations are the two old Kentucky penitentiary cemeteries at the base of Fort Hill, the Bellevue Cemetery at the end of Fifth Avenue, some of the historic sidewalks and retaining walls throughout the city, old dry stacked stone fences built by slave or inmate labor, archaeological sites within the city, and more. In one update to the singing bridge years ago, the old wooden logs from the previous covered bridge were discovered and then discarded back into the river. It is precisely incidents such as these where a historic preservation officer would have, and if reestablished, would in the future benefit the city moving forward by protecting and documenting these resources. Frankfurt was proud to become one of the first certified local governments in Kentucky in 1986, recognizing its responsibility to protect its cultural resources. Today, it accompanies about 20 other of the most economically successful cities in the Commonwealth, including Louisville, Lexington, Covington, Bowling Green, and Owensboro, and about 46 or 47 of the other 49 capitals in the nation to hold a distinction as a certified local government. So as evidenced by its company, Frankfurt endures no ill effects as a CLG than any other major city in the Commonwealth or other state capital. Assertions to the contrary do not hold up to the evidence. As a member of the CLG program, Frankfurt has been required to have and maintain staff with historic preservation expertise. That has not occurred consistently and mostly not at all. As we know Frankfurt's history, whether it be as a state capital or a major historic hub for bourbon production, is a major drive of its tourism industry and is integral to Frankfurt's identity. Indeed, the major characteristics of the aesthetic beauty and character of Frankfurt are directly derived from and the results of the efforts of historic preservationists over many decades. I have heard it said by my professional historic preservationist friends that there is enough work in Frankfurt to keep a historic preservation officer busy for at least a decade or more. I agree with that statement and would add that a historic preservationist, preservationist's job is never done. Just as it was in the 1950s and 1960s, Frankfurt is once again at a crossroads with the development of Parcels B and C. The Downtown Master Plan, a plan that involved exhaustive community involvement and input, called for accentuating and exploiting Frankfurt's historic resources, not demolishing them, not forgetting about them. With the current Parks Master Plan in development, the upcoming comprehensive plan, the implementation of the Downtown Master Plan, and to ensure proper protection and consideration of Frankfurt's, Frankfurt's cultural resources, a full-time historic preservation officer for the city of Frankfurt is a must. I implore the city to accept its obligation and responsibility as stewards of our historic cultural resources which are in the public trust for the benefit and enjoyment of current and future generations and to swiftly adopt and move forward with this proposal. Very truly yours, John Carlton."
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Tippett?
Uh, I believe we have a letter from the Franklin County Trust for Historic Preservation too, don't we, Shereen? It was, that was sent to us too by email. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
I received the same email. I did receive the same email because they had stated that since Wisman was not part of that email, since he was a sitting, sitting commissioner, that he was not a part of the email sent, the letter that was sent. So I am aware that that did come through because she made that statement.
That came from the president, right, of that?
That is, I do believe so, yes.
We, if we can't read it, we need to put it into the record anyway, okay, Mayor?
Um, okay, I don't think it was sent as, was it sent, I don't think it was sent as a citizen comment, but if, um, if a commission, if you... Sorry, Ms. Ross? You're muted.
I did not see it, so I'm, I'm apologize, I'm not sure.
It was addressed to, it was addressed to the mayor and the commission, Mayor.
Well, we can, we can make it. Uh, you can include that in the record if you, if you want.
Yeah, yeah, I just think it would be appropriate to do that.
Okay.
So citizens would have access to it.
Okay.
Shereen, I just forwarded it to you. It was only addressed to the commission members.
Okay, perfect. All right. Um, that was it on those. Okay, so next item would be, thank you, city clerk. Next item would be discussion items. The first one is, item number one, it's the memorandum of understanding with Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, something that we have previously done. It's to work on the Kentucky Intelligence Fusion Center. It's passed through the city. It's something that we set up a few years ago and just asking that we can renew a MOU, memorandum of understanding. Any questions?
Approve.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Wisman?
Second.
Second back, Commissioner Waldridge. Um, any discussion? All right, CNN clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, that item's adopted. Uh, next will be item number two. This is forwarding paving contract to Colston Paving Incorporated for the Pennsley Thoroughbred Trail. And I even remember what year we started this project. It was in my, back in my first term, so it was back in the 90s. Uh, so finally, um, we'll hopefully get this thing saved and and walkable for our students and residents to walk up and down East Main Street safely. So there's any questions? We have staff available. If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I may not move to approve, but I was just wondering as well when, um, when it would be set to occur or to begin.
That would be my question.
Okay, let me, let me do the motion first and then we can come back for questions. Motion by Commissioner Wisman, second by Commissioner Waldridge. Okay, Commissioner Wisman and then Commissioner Waldridge.
Just the question again, Mayor, I was wondering when, if, I had assumed it's too late in the year that this can get started. It will have to be probably spring before they get to start construction on that, or do we have any information?
Um, city manager Russell, do you know the answer to that?
I think Rebecca, uh, had the information, had the latest information. I'm Ms. Hall, did.
Okay.
Yes, um. I'm not sure about the paving. I know they're gonna go ahead and start with some of the clearing as soon as possible. That they're, um, ready to roll, Colston is. So I believe they're gonna at least start the project. I believe we gave them till the end of April to complete it, but, um, they, I think they're ready to start immediately.
So do you know if they could, I mean, like, start paving?
I don't, I don't know what their paving schedule is. I just know they're, they're planning to get up there and start and clearing um, as soon as we get the contract signed.
Okay. If we could ask, maybe we could hurry. Okay, did that answer your question, Commissioner Wisman?
Yeah. Until the end of April, so it'll be ready to go for spring. Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Excited about this one.
Okay, Commissioner Waldridge and then Commissioner Sauer.
Um, I believe my, my, uh, my question was answered through, uh, Mr. Wisman, but I am excited about this. I've been pushing for this to get back on the agenda several times. Uh, when we had city commission, uh, city manager Keith Parker, and so I'm glad that we're moving forward. So thank you Rebecca in continuing to stay on this and continuing to push this forward. I know there was a few hiccups you worked us through. So truly appreciate your leadership in getting that through as well. So, thank you.
Um, Commissioner Sauer. Uh, Commissioner Sauer, you are muted, sir.
There we go, sorry about that.
No problem.
I just wanted to make a comment regarding Colston Paving. Obviously, they're a local, uh, company. I've done business twice with them for large projects and they were impeccable. They were thorough. They did everything right. They were also, you understand me, they were also the lowest and best bidder for the contracts. They did a, a great job and it's, it's nice to see a local company get some business like that. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, if not, we have a motion and a second clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
A long time coming, yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, and thank all of our staff that worked on it for so many years to get us to this point. Commissioner Sauer.
Mayor May, uh, I just wanted to point out that this is yet another large project that this commission concluded, and I think we ought to be very proud of that.
Absolutely.
There have been a number of things that have been carried over and carried over, and we got the job done, thanks to Ms. Hall, thanks to the two city managers that we've had recently. We got the job done. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tippett?
Yeah, Mayor, I think we'd be remiss to, if we didn't mention at least some of the, uh, hard work some of our citizen volunteers put in. I can think of Mr. Stossberg particularly. I, I remember him laboring over that, uh, for many years and he suffered, he's long suffered so. And there are more, but I can't really think of, uh, the citizens who are really pushing the connectivity and that's to their good credit. And, uh, it's been a true community effort. So yes, it's a feather in all of our hats.
Yes, thank you. And also a lot of legal work on this going back, a lot of lot, lot, lot of legal work to get that worked out. So thank you. Let's see, next item, number three, historic preservation officer. I saw an attachment. I don't know if you all had it, had a chance to review it.
Mayor May?
Um, Commissioner Wisman?
Correct. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I hope everyone did get a chance to review the attachment. Um, I have put quite a lot of work into this for, for some time and trying to develop this position that I think, um, the last two years has laid bare very much the, the need for, um, someone that has expertise to navigate a lot of these, these hurdles that we've, we've had with almost every project we've came up against in this commission. So, um, you know, there's been some discussion of, of this seems sudden, but if, uh, anyone will remember, I think the, uh, the, one of the very first things that I brought to this commission, last year at the beginning of the term, was the need for this officer. And unfortunately, it wasn't put in the budget, but I haven't given up hope and, uh, been trying since. But, but there is a document that I have based, um, and had, uh, Mrs. Ross and, uh, Mrs. Fields review, that is in relation to job duties that I have found typical of, um, positions across the nation in some of the best communities that would look at, um, our historic resources, be a position that would provide oversight to those job or to those, those resources, be an advocate for our, our citizens and a resource for our citizens, and, um, also find, um, ways to be proactive in, in the management of, of our historic places. Most of the city of Frankfurt, um, would qualify for the National Register of Historic Places at this point. Um, even neighborhoods like Indian Hills and other communities are being nominated where, where those communities can use federal tax credits and incentives, um, that we need to make better use of for our, our citizens. But, um, you know, there, there are any number of opportunities for a position like this to, to serve our community. Uh, just this morning, I spent about two and a half hours on a, a conference call as a consulting party to the Broadway Bridge project where, um, in numerous things were discussed, um, that, that Frankfurt has opportunity for, such as, uh, about a half dozen additional historic resources that were identified by the consultants looking at the bridge project.
Let's have the lost Commissioner Wisman's audio. His feed might be a problem.
I'm back, guys, sorry.
Sorry.
I froze up for a second. I have got this thing connected, uh, the cord, but it's not working safe, so. Um, sorry, I'm not sure where I stopped off there, but I was just saying that I hope everyone had a chance to, to review the documents. I went quite a lot of length in reviewing similar positions across Kentucky and in some of the leading communities across our, our state to, to draft this and hopefully it is, um, something will, will be very beneficial for, for Frankfurt in the future.
Oh, okay, thank you, Commissioner Wisman. Um, Commissioner Tippett, go ahead.
Just, just a couple of quick questions, Mayor. I, I assume staff has worked the details. Ms. Ross, we've worked this out and, uh, can this be brought to for a first reading, uh, sometime in the very near future?
Uh, the ordinance, if we're, if we are going with this route, the ordinance is very simple. It won't take but a little bit of work to get it done. We can get it on for a first reading because the only thing that we'll be doing is adding the position to our page chart. There won't be a job description by ordinance. That'll just be part of our normal process, uh, where the job description for employees is on file.
Okay, did that answer your question, Commissioner Tippett?
Uh, he, he, uh, so there are a few more details. I mean, we, um, this is not a, this is not department head level position. This is correct, that we're, that we're thinking about establishing.
Oh, I don't know, um...
I'll chime in on that, Mayor, if I can. In a sense, no, Commissioner Tippett. Um, but the way I drafted it, it would report directly to the city manager. Um, because it would be so intertwined with every department in making sure that each, uh, individual project in every department is compliant on a federal and state level. We've all kind of went over those issues time and time again, that we need that, that party to, to be there. Um, of course, they would also serve, um, the planning department as the, um, primary contact for the architecture review board to provide that, um, continuity that is needed. Um, I'll remind everyone, uh, something that came to mind the other day was, um, two city managers back, um, we did have a position in the planning department that was a preservation expert, preservation planner. Um, my previous city manager, Mrs. Steinhauser, during her tenure, uh, those restrictions or those, um, not restrictions, but those duties were stripped from that position and were never, um, created anywhere else, uh, in our city. So we have not, since 2014, I believe, when Maya DeRosa left, had a person that had any qualifications, um, with any oversight in historic preservation matters. So that's going off the topic a little bit for you, but, but to your question, um, because the position would be so intertwined with every department, it would be a direct reporting position to the city manager, um, but not necessarily a department head level in terms of a pay criteria, I suppose.
I, um, Mayor?
Tippett?
Yes, uh, thank you, Commissioner. That's really what I was asking. What's appropriate chain command would be for this position? And the, uh, the city manager would direct, uh, and have, uh, ultimate authority over this position. And as I see it, Commissioner, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, um, th- this person would be a liaison between the city manager, the planning department, and probably historic sites and the museum board. Am I correct in assuming that? So this person would, yes, so this person would, would assimilate all this information and report it to the city manager, right? Uh, I, I guess I'm trying to say is we, we, we do want the final authority, uh, I think, to rest with the city manager and then ultimately with the board of commissioners, right? So if, if that's clearly established, Ms. Ross, right, I mean, is that, does that make sense? Am I making sense here?
Sure, I think the job description will say that really the ordinance is just adding them to the chart.
Okay.
Okay. This, Commissioner Waldridge?
Um, I know that, um, Lauren and you guys have been working on this. Has any of the community had any input on this job description or any of this process with this particular position, Laura? I'm sorry, Ms. Ross. Get my microphone on. Uh, I honestly do not know, so I will, um, defer that question to Commissioner Tippett or whoever can answer.
Um, Commissioner Tippett?
Yes, Bobby, are you there, Bobby? Is Bobby there?
Yes, I'm here.
Um, of course, it's this, what I'm, we're about to show you is not scientific, but it is certainly indicative of the general mood of the community. Um, there just seems to be, and I'm not, and I'm talking about the entire community, not just the city. There just seems to be, we seem to be flailing about with our, with our cultural resources. Uh, and I think some of this, uh, not scientific polling done by the State Journal, uh, uh, is indicative of that. There's some frustration in the community. And if Bobby, if you'll show that very quickly, uh, it, it will indicate the community's, I think, the community's level of support on an anecdotal level. Uh, it's the, it's the poll, Bobby. That would be for the, yeah, that's for the next one. That's it. Uh, you know, of course, this is not scientific, but I, I do think it, it does give us an idea of where the community stands on this. 52% yes, 31% no, and 16% says probably. So that gives us a clear direction of the, where the community stands on this. And I think we, again, this goes back to us getting our ducks in a row, uh, as to avoid the, these, these controversies that, that pop up and divide the community. So if we can do this and we can, and give this person sufficient latitude, uh, to communicate across department lines and answer to the city manager and ultimately the board of commissioners, I think we've done our due diligence, okay? And I think this shows that the community does support this. Thank you. You can take it down, Bobby.
And I'll, I'll speak to that too, Commissioner Tippett. Uh, yes, that, a number of citizens have had input on this. Um, for a great while, uh, there's been discussion for at least 10 years to my mind of the need for this position. Uh, the last person to serve in a role of this type, I believe, was, uh, left the city in the early 2000s. Um, and I, I would just remind everyone, we have a, a mandate that we made a agreement with the state of Kentucky to have a position on staff that does this job, um, that we obligated ourselves to in, in the 80s. And we've been very poor at, at maintaining that position. So as far as input in this job description, I, it's been reviewed by a number of people. I sent it to in numerous citizens around town. Um, the Franklin County Trust, of course, has reviewed that. I recused myself from, from their letter and the discussion. I did provide, uh, information as to the basis of the, the position, but, uh, members of the architecture review board had input and worked in helping and providing, uh, information and general citizens as well. So it's been versed, um, by a, a number of people throughout the community that are, that are concerned about preservation and on a broader scale in, in Frankfurt.
Okay, Commissioner Waldridge, do you have your hand up?
I did, actually. Um, and so thank you, Scott, for sharing the poll. But again, that is a State Journal poll. Um, sometimes there's 40 people, sometimes there's 100 people, so I don't really think that that speaks for our community as a whole. Um, within percentages, I like to see numbers. I'm not, I did not see a number attached to that to say that over 1,000 or 5,000 people, um, actually, um, did that survey. So I don't think that that speaks, um, for our community, um, especially dealing with the State Journal. However, I've, I've heard from many people in the community who are in support of this position, who think that it's something we need. I know that it's, it's something that has been in the works for a while. One thing that I want to say is, you know, does this, does this position have to be a full-time, uh, position? Is this actually something that we need to bring someone on full-time for 365 days out of the year? Um, you know, with benefits and everything of that nature, what does that look like? And is, do, do we have to have them full-time? And, and I'm not saying that we don't need them. I, I think that, uh, the community is speaking about that. If we went with a poll, I think it's a poll that needs to come from the city, um, that will go out just as we have some other polls that have gone out on our website to, to get that scientific information the best that we can. But I think right now, I, I'm just not, I don't know if it's something that we need full-time. Um, maybe one of you guys that have been, uh, working this can, can explain that it's needed and, and would that person have a full schedule, um, 365 days a year to have a full-time job in that area?
Any other questions, comments? Okay.
I'll, I'll just react to that, um, that question, Mayor. Um, you know, in my experience, having again served on the architecture review board prior, um, and in understanding the, that nearly every project that this commission has had to deal with over the last two years had some component of, of heritage, history, something, um, that we fell short on, quite frankly. Often, time and time again, um, there is enough work for, for a person to do, um, for a lifetime. Um, for a lifetime, quite frankly. It was mentioned in one of the, the comments earlier. Here, um, to keep a, a full-time position busy all the time. We're seeing alone the development of our downtown core over the last. Year alone during COVID here, the, the vast impact and, and investment that's happening all over the city. And we're seeing a great deal of development throughout our, our city. And frankly, we can do a lot more um in terms of, of utilizing federal um incentives and, and tax credits and. And other money that um would relieve some of the burden off our own taxes or our own um. Coffers here at the city. Um, so this position is, is far-reaching and, and vastly needed. And to be quite frank, I wouldn't doubt that it would need an assistance of its own at some point in the future. Because the amount of work that, that needs to be done. Um, frankly, we have a lot of catching up to do and we need a position that's very proactive in, in working with. The community and with citizens. We need to, to combat the um, the misinformation that goes around our community um directly. And, and this position is, is very much going to be at the head of that, I hope. So. Um, yes, there's, there's more than enough need, in my opinion. And as a representative of the citizens of the city, um, you know, it's my duty and, and all of ours to, to take those polls, if you will. And take the pulse of the city and move forward in the appropriate action that we deem necessary for, for the citizens of, of Frankfurt and um. And I'm in full support of creating this. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Waldrich.
There we go. Okay. Um, so do we? Or does the commission or the majority of the commission already have someone in mind for this position? Or will this position then be created and we will then go through our HR for that to be submitted for? All of Kentucky or anyone that wants to apply for this position? Um, and giving a feasible time in between now. And our second reading of this to approve it for it to be a position, then posted. And so we're looking that this position may not be hired till maybe January. If we do this appropriately through HR, what is, what are you guys depending on? What, what is that looking like as far as hiring someone? If we're doing this appropriately, since it is the first time uh for hiring someone in this position?
Let me, let me call out Commissioner Sauer since he hasn't chatted in there, Commissioner Tippett.
Two things, you know, I think this position affects a lot of different departments. And that's why I guess the decision was made to go through the city manager. Uh, because just in, in our term of office, uh, members of the commission, you've seen. The need for it on East Main, you've seen the need for it now on Second Street, you've seen. The need for it out at uh Capital View Park, you've seen the uh need for it out at Cove Springs. Uh, you know, almost every department is affected by this position. We've got a job description and for me, you know, I would be, I, I would think after you have a job description, which I think has been tweaked by the staff. Uh, that we need to go ahead and advertise as soon as possible.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Tippett, and then I'm gonna chime in too.
Sure, sure, Mayor. I, I, I would just say. You know, we, we don't want to give this thing short shrift. We need somebody with expertise. Okay? Uh, and, and what I, what I really want. What I envision is. In concert with departments and especially the city manager and the overall. Um. I'm running for the, the message of the board, the idea of the board. Uh, the uh, that, that person would be even-handed. Okay? You know, th- there are some things that are truly, uh, we need to preserve. And that person would then make the recommendation uh that these items or this structure needs to be preserved. And then be even-handed enough to say, look, you know, we don't need to, you know, we don't need to say this. Okay? Uh, and, and let it go the way into the dustbin of history. Uh, I can just think that. You know, in, in our, in our painful recent past, you know, uh, we could have avoided a lot of consternation. And we can all agree, I think, that uh, you know, our, our buildings in our central business district. And uh Ford Hill and all those things. Need due diligence. Uh, and quite frankly, um. You know, w- we imperiled that with some precipitous action uh from the city. You know, and it was a painful lesson. So yes, let, yes, Commissioner Waldrich, let, let's do it correctly. Let's get people with expertise. And uh, let's do it by the numbers and. I, I think uh, the vision is the word I'm looking for. Thank you for giving, for bearing with. The vision of the commission. Could then be implemented by the city manager through this new person working across department lines. Uh, does that make sense? That's what I think it should be.
Thank you, Commissioner Tippett. I wanna, I wanna speak in favor. Um, I wasn't really sure. About some of these concerns on the historic. Preservation ordinance, because I know under constructing. I spoke to the city manager about this, that the need for statutory construction or struck, constructing laws at the city levels in ordinance. But the, to do the cross references that need to be done, I think that's important, but. I do think having a historic preservation officer in place is something that's extremely important and I appreciate. Citizen input on, on issues, but if, if we uh are gonna be leaders, we, we need to make a decision based on our experience. And, and for me, having grown up in this community. And also talking with other mayors. You know, heritage tourism is an important part of, of communities that, that have. You know, historic buildings or, or the architecture that people like to come and see. And. If we lose that, we become any town USA and then people aren't gonna come here. I mean, nobody goes to Williamsburg because. Of something else. They go there for the, for the historical buildings and the architecture. So. I'm not comparing us to that, but. We don't want to be any town USA. We, we don't want to just be a stop on the interstate for somebody to pull over and spend the night in a hotel and get back on the interstate or. Grab a, you know, a hamburger at one of the restaurants next to the, the interstate development. We want people to come into our community. And we want them to stay. And, and preserving our historical uh heritage, you know, fabric is extremely important. I think it's. Uh, having, having looked at this more and, and conversations I've had with others, just the, the need of that is, is important and uh. Having been here when we, we had positions that did look at the historical perspective and, and uh. Someone with the, the background. And this type of, of uh. Procedure, I think was important. And I, I think it was, Commissioner Wisman, you just mentioned. The position with, with Mr. Rosa. I'd, I'd sort of forgotten a little about that. But yes, I didn't realize until that just kind of. Turned on a light switch in my head, thinking, oh, but we haven't had that position for a while, and I think it is important. So I'll support it and think that we need, I do think it's important. For that person to be somewhat independent of department heads to be able to make a uh. Uh, decision that. Wouldn't be, I guess, uh, tamped down by a department head that may in the future not be for historic preservation. That could be uh pro tear everything down and build everything new type thing. I've seen that happen in other communities. We certainly don't want that to happen here. So that's why I would, at this point, I'm ready to support it. Would ask the, uh, if there's enough support, we ask our solicitor to draft the ordinance. And, and get that going as soon as, as possible. Commissioner Waldrich had her hand up, then Commissioner Wisman.
Um, I just wanted to add, um, it's not that I'm completely against this. I just want to make sure it's something that we need full-time, as stated. I'm not saying that it's something we don't need. Um, it's just something I want to make sure that we're vetting through because it seems like there's. One particular commission, you know, that is really heavy in this and has been preparing this, and I just want to make sure everything is done correctly and moving forward. Um, but I also want to take this time also to bring attention to um section thirty-nine point one zero, post-employment restrictions. So those that have worked with the city or officials that have served in the city. Would not be able to hold such a position or work in such a position one year after leaving the city after termination. And so I just want to also say that, that this is something, this is a position, this is us moving forward for something new that we need for this community. But we also need to keep in mind that we're also trying to bring diversity and I would love for us to be able to reach out. To minority communities and things and making sure that we get this vetted through someone who is. Able to come in and bring their talents to Frankfurt to better our area in this um, in this particular area of natural um historic preservation. And so for me. I, I can be supportive. I just want to make sure that all of our Ts and Is are dotted and crossed. Um, but I also want to make sure that we're pushing diversity. It seems like we're pushing. This one position through as though diversity has been lost. I've brought up that position as well. We won't get into that since that's not on the agenda. But I think we see what priorities are for this particular commission. So we have about a month or so left, but I just want to make sure that in moving forward in this next month and a half. That we're doing uh and vetting what we need to vet uh for this community and to make sure the, the right people uh take such a position on. So, thank you.
Commissioner Wisman. You had your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. I um had wanted to state a couple of things, but I, I appreciate everyone's support for this. I, I think this commission, it has just been beaten over our heads. Um, the need for, for a, a. Level of certification and understanding in principles of historic preservation that, that we. Do our due diligence, we comply with state and federal regulations and, and we. Maximize the benefits to our community that, that this kind of work does. Uh, as you mentioned. You know, historic preservation, our, our old buildings, our, our downtown is what makes us unique and what brings people to us. Um. Our architecture specifically in this city, um, we have in numerous examples that only exist. In this one place, this capital city, the capital buildings, the distilleries, all of these things to, you know, are unique to us and. And we have not done as good as we can about preserving those and maximizing the, the benefit of those for us. So, um. One last statement, just as the, uh, you know, the little knife that Mrs. Walders likes to put in your side and, and turn a little bit. I have no intent of applying for this position. It was said at our last meeting in closed session. Uh, some accusations were made there by Commissioner Waldrich that were not very nice, but um. I am dedicated to finding someone very, very qualified. And going through the appropriate process to hire this position for the benefit of our community. Um, I am aware of some people that would be interested across the state of Kentucky and I think we're all. Dedicated to principles of diversity and inclusion and all of those uh key factors of employment that we need to uh. To remind of, but just for the record, I will not be applying for this position. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say something real quick in response. Um, for me, the supporting this position would help. Uh, preserve neighborhoods, the heritage that was lost in the African-American community. Uh, where parcels being C are. Having uh torn those, the Capitol Plaza structures down and being able to drive the streets. When I get there, I get a, when I drive those streets, I have a special feeling. Uh, and it's a, and it's a feeling of loss, but it's also. A feeling of, 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 of pride of, of what that community would have felt like. Back in the day when people were supportive of each other there. And I think it's. It's, it's more than a sad state. It's a travesty that the whole neighborhood was wiped out to, to build. The uh, the Capitol Plaza area. So that's one of the things too. I want to make sure that we recognize our heritage, honor our past. And, and look towards preserving that for the future. Very important to me and. I, I think that's one of the main reasons I want to do that. Having lost a family. Home on Wapping Street where the library is would turn into a parking line where the library is now, that, that feeling of loss, Commissioner. Sauer knows um that all too well and having. He got to see it. I never got to see it. It was torn down before I was born, but. Right before historic preservation efforts really hit, but uh having. Lost that type of structure and others in the community. Uh, I think that's what, what we want to do here. And again, the, the heritages that the African, African-American community lost. When, when those, that whole neighborhood was wiped out is, is something that i- is painful to a lot of people and we want to preserve and honor. Uh, those types of memories. Commissioner Tippett?
Um, just real quickly, Mayor, uh, there, there's just tons and tons of qualified people out there. Um, and quite frankly, I, you know. I don't want to hurt Commissioner Wisman's feelings, but uh, they're more qualified than he is. You know, and I think he. He, and I'm sure he agrees with that. And uh, you know, uh. I, I don't know. I want to tread lightly here. I, I certainly would not uh be part of anything. Uh, that was trying to set up some sort of post. Employment, employment for anybody. Not that I don't have a great deal of respect for Commissioner Wisman, I do. But I would not be a part of that. I, I came to the board. Four years ago, selflessly, and I'm not perfect. Uh, as a civic project to try to better my community. Uh, and you know, we, we get so caught up. In these uh internecine battles. Uh, sometimes we can't see the forest or the trees. Uh, most people who volunteer, I mean, it's essentially volunteering. Their time to do civic work are good people. Um, I have disagreed with Commissioner Wisman many times. Mayor, you and I go way back and. I didn't agree with you my first term very often. Uh, didn't vote with you very often, but I never felt like. You know, that, that just because we didn't agree that you were evil. Okay? And we had some pretty serious disagreements. So I, I think we have got to get past this. This pinch on of trying to figure out, you know, who's got an angle, who's working an angle. Uh, and do our dead-level best to serve our community. And I'm not saying that anybody is not. But there just seems to be a lot of rancor and bitterness that we need to uh remove from our plates. So thank you, and I think we need to get direct staff to uh bring this to us for a first reading.
Okay. Commissioner Sauer. Yeah, that connects a jet, Commissioner.
Your volume, Commissioner Sauer.
I'm sorry. Uh, Mayor, let's move on to item number four.
Let's uh then. Okay, so if there's, we'll have the city solicitor prepare the ordinance uh to be uh independent of any. Other department, but report to the city manager. That's okay. All right. Uh, city manager?
And this would be the full-time position, sir?
I believe so.
Okay.
Does anyone object to that?
Commissioner. One, one small change.
Okay.
I had talked to Mr. Russell earlier that um we were sort of playing around and we hadn't finalized a pay grade. Um, for the position, but I, I believe Mr. Russell settled on something that he fed, thought was fitting for the, for the position, given the. Uh, the range and the, the duties that um is probably not what is, was circulated on your, um, your job titles that, that we've reviewed. That would be maybe one change that um is to be made, just uh, but I think staff can bring, make those changes and bring it forward to us.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Waldrich.
Yes, I just wanted to add um that. In working toward this, you know, um, due to Commissioner Tippett's um statement is that. I don't think at all that it's bitterness or anything moving forward. I think it's just the fact that. Within this commission, you know, there has been some suspect things. There has been some things that have been done that are not, to me, viable. For great leadership and that has been an issue. And so that's why there's second guessing and it's not second guessing every single commissioner or mayor or whatever. But there's things that have occurred that have, have brought this on. So this is not something that I'm sort of bringing in. You know, as though it's bitterness or something. Trust me, I have no bitterness. I'm doing very well and I'm trying to lead the city in the manner that I think that it should be. But one thing that I do want to just mention in this, um, as the mayor had brought up, you know, in regards to African-American history is that. You know, I really look forward to the day that we have a commission. A full board of commission that truly takes African-Americans to history very serious, upfront and impersonal, very serious. And not try to take it serious when it's keeping us from moving forward on something or it's trying to give us what we need. I would like to see all history definitely taking uh taken serious in this area, definitely knowing what's going on with African-American history that has happened way before. You and I and the mayor uh serving, but you know, at the. uh, serving, but you know, at the same time, I've already brought up, you know, a diversity position over and over, and that has been looked over and pushed aside, but yet we're pushing other things forward. And what I want to share is that African American history is very important and history period is, is important, but it's important before we get to an area of where, oh, this may keep us, or this may get more people to vote for a particular item or a particular movement of our city. African American history, as I am an African American, it is important before we get to that point. And that's what I'm looking forward in, in maybe the next commission coming. Is that we look forward to that before it gets into a necessity of where we have to throw it out there to make it seem like we're doing something for the black community at the very tail end to say, oh, well, we're doing this and, oh, let's remember the African American history down at Parcel B area, you know, it's, it seems like that we as a commission have allowed us to always tag on that African American history at the end, but then there's no substance added on to it. We're not moving forward with diversity positions. We're not moving forward with a diversity officer. And that's what I'm looking forward to in the next city commission. And it sort of bothers me and irks me as an African American that sometimes it's just tagged on to make, I guess, some commissioners think that that's, make it a little bit sweeter. It doesn't. It makes it a cop out that that's why you're doing something. And I want to move forward where that's going to be our priority is history for all, all history, not just African American history, but not to tag on African American history, but lead with African American history. So that's, that's some of my issues. Thank you.
Commissioner Sauer.
Mayor, uh, you could, you could help me on this because of your long leadership here. Uh, but as far, I, I think the first part of your remarks, uh, Patricia, were, uh, addressing, uh, leadership, black, American leadership, African American leadership. And of course, before Derek Graham served on the city commission, distinguishedly, uh, we had Dr. Gertrude Rigel. Uh, Tommy Haynes twice served as mayor pro town. And, and so that's some of our leadership that we've had recently on the city commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Sauer. In fact, I was the, uh, mayor at the time and suggested that, requested that we appoint Dr. Gertrude Rigel to the board. So I was honored to, to serve with her and she was a wonderful asset to our community. Uh, I do take exception with, with some of those remarks made, uh, especially with the career that I've had in this community with, leadership in, in the African American community and the whole community in terms of heritage issues especially. You know, when we, uh, at my direction, we came up with a, uh, marker to designate at the Green Hill Cemetery, the, uh, the monument that's there to the, uh, African American Civil War soldiers, one of only three monuments in the United States, and actually had reenactors from the 54th Massachusetts Regiment come to our community and, and do a whole program on, uh, on that his, history. And we had the, uh, Center for, uh, African American Studies at, at, uh, Kentucky State University and worked on, on that. And so, you know, trying to make this an issue, I think, I, I don't, I don't appreciate that a bit. And I think people, people know here that I've, that I've grown up with and Commissioner Sauer, Commissioner Tippett. You know, we, we grew up at Frankfurt, down in the downtown area, went to Frankfurt High and, and, uh, a lot of, a lot of things that, that we know about history in this community as a whole, uh, certainly precludes and proceeds, rather precedes our, our time on the commission. So uh, any, anything that's, that's any way meant to disparage that, uh, I will take exception to and, and, uh, Commissioner Wisman, I, I, I know your deep history, uh, our love for history too transcends all communities and we look forward to this. So this, this is not a situation where we're trying to make this a more palatable position. It's a position for all of the community. Uh, and I just mentioned the, the loss of, of Craw. And that was not just African American community. There were others that lived there too. So it, it's just, oh, I had a good friend that wrote a, a book, uh, on the craw and very, very good research. And, and just again, it's one of those things that you feel that loss in our community, having grown up here and remembering it. It, it's just a sad state when, when we wipe out whole communities and watch part of South Frankfurt be, uh, torn down when the flood wall went up. So just saying, I understand that. I feel it having grown up in that community. And it's something that is very close to us. Those of us that have lived in this community all of our lives, uh, we feel that in a different way than maybe, maybe others that have, that have just moved here or transplanted. So we'll go on to the, uh, Arbus position. We'll have the, uh, historic preservation officer on as soon as it's available. Hopefully we can expedite that. Next number four is the Arbus position. Um, I believe we have already, we saw a recommendation from the city manager that I saw, I believe I got it today, may, may have come out Friday. I'm not sure, but city manager Russell, I will turn that over to you for more input, please.
Thank you, sir. Uh, yes, I've sent you all an email today asking, uh, stating that I would like to, uh, ask Ms. Alex Cunningham to take the position, uh, of Arbus, uh, just same discussion we had had at the last board meeting, I think on the 26th. But I had a conversation with her about, uh, certification, things of that nature, and come to an agreement on a salary for the increase in job duties. We have, I believe Ms. Ross, uh, its other duties as assigned perhaps or change of job duty. So, uh, under the city manager's purview, uh, and we can move forward with that. Is that correct, ma'am?
She is shaking her ass and, and she just said yes, can read lips. Commissioner Sauer.
So Mayor, do we need a, a motion to accept the city manager's recommendation or can he do that just by himself?
Um, we can go ahead. Good motion back. Are you making a motion, Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Okay, motion back, Commissioner Sauer.
Second.
Second, Mayor.
Second back, Commissioner Waldrich, I heard. I believe Commissioner Wisman was trying to chime, but I heard Commissioner Waldrich, um, any discussion?
I have a question, Mayor.
Um, Commissioner Tippett.
We have a sec, we have a second, right? So we're in discuss, so we're in discussion, right? Uh, I was just looking at the expression on Ms. Ms. Ross's face. Are we complicating this by, by voting on it, Ms. Ross?
It's okay. It really doesn't have an effect. It just shows your support. So.
Okay, call the question, Mayor. Call the question, Mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion? No, all right. Commissioner Waldrich.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I just wanted to thank you for the interim city manager that, you know, for, thank you for taking my call and discussing this, um, position. Uh, I definitely support Alex in this position fully. Um, as I stated with you, something that I do have on the table is to make sure that we are taking women to a higher standard and serving them in our, uh, city government in our city positions as far as salaries are concerned, to make sure that they are comparable to the men that are working in this city as well and to be able to uphold them. So I appreciate you taking my call and being understanding to that and also setting, uh, her salary to where she has deserved. Three years she has done this with no compensation, which has been great. Um, and I know that she'll be certified, um, soon, uh, in that where we can then revisit this, um, with the new commission coming in hopefully. Um, but I definitely support this and definitely support her being at a, um, salary that's comparable to men that are working in her area that have served time and things of that nature. So I appreciate you taking the time to speak with me in regards to Ms. Alex in this position and just being able to have women across the board, uh, fairly compensated in our city government moving forward. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Another good, another good call there by our city manager. Thank you, Commissioner, I mean, city manager Russell for doing what other city managers weren't able to do in providing leadership to, to get women paid on an equal basis. I wasn't aware that they weren't. Uh, that was something that's been important to me over the years to have more women in, in government and minorities. And I appointed a lot of female and minorities to boards and commissions. So Commissioner, uh, thank you, City Manager Russell for moving this in that direction. I certainly wasn't aware of that since our last harvest was a female. All right, uh, clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Um, I will say yes, and I just wanted to add that, um, that was, Mayor, that was just a discussion that I brought up to him that I wanted to bring to his attention moving forward on other positions. It really wasn't to her position, but I did discuss in what that financial, um, payout should be for, I thought, for Alex, and I hope he does take my, my, um, consideration of that. Um, so I just wanted to share that, so.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Uh, yes, I'm explaining to you. Just, just for the record too, our positions are not based on male or female. They're based on salary levels. Uh, so any, anyone that thinks that there's any discrimination whatsoever, I'm certainly not aware of it. If there is, I'll be the first one to, to say we need to correct that, but, um, I just want, I don't want to get that impression out to the public that the city has not been paying people fairly by their gender. That is proved. Next item would be number five, proposal to document and assess cultural landscape on Fort Hill. I believe we have a proposal of, and Commissioner Tippett, I saw, I guess I wasn't aware that you had a presentation. I'm guessing that you do because the one that Bobby was, Mr. Rippey was trying to show.
Right. Um, yeah, can we put that, is it okay, Mayor? Do I, do I have the floor, Mayor?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Bobby, can you, we can put that up now and I, I'm not going to bore everybody by reading through this. But I would urge, uh, citizens, uh, this is part of the record, so citizens can get this and read it and they need to. Um, what I would say is, um, so we, can we scroll down just a little bit, Bobby? These bullet points, okay, outline, uh, sort of the analysis, uh, and investigation of all of our cultural resources done by professionals, uh, including Mr. Stottman, an archaeologist and the Kentucky Office of State Archaeology. Uh, and they're laying out all of our cultural resources, uh, above ground and below ground. And what, what we know is, is that we are just, it's just, we are, we have rich, a rich, deep, broad, wide heritage. Uh, and this goes back to the argument of, of having the preservation officer. Um, and Bobby, if you can scroll up just a little bit, please. Okay, this is Mr. Stottman's, uh, proposal, uh, and he, and he has, uh, just, uh, in-depth exhaustive, uh, archaeological analysis of, of new sites uh, that were revealed to us, uh, just behind what was the old tower. Uh, so what I would say is, you know, items, agenda items three and five, uh, will, will help us round out the parks master plan. Uh, I, I see it as a great, uh, opportunity to maximize our connectivity with trails and, and paths while protecting our cultural resources. Uh, this will create a more robust economic impact, uh, if we integrate all these community assets. And I believe what we will find is, uh, if we, if we are deliberative, and I'm sure the next board will be deliberative, uh, um, and thoughtful and taking all concerns and all aspects, then we can, uh, develop master plans, uh, that will, uh, give us more bang for our buck economically. Uh, we can protect our cultural resources and provide for tourism dollars, investing in tourism dollars. And, and things like Mr. Stottman's proposal will help us do that. And, uh, it, it will provide for connectivity as well. We, we are not, uh, solely protecting historic or cultural resources. We are providing routes for connectivity so folks can get to these things, uh, and look at them and enjoy them. And it will increase our revenue in tourism. So I, I just think this is a wonderful idea. I think we should consider it. Uh, I just wish, you know, we would have been this methodical, this analytical, this deliberative a year and a half ago. Uh, I would have fewer gray hairs if we had. And it's, we, the, you know, what, what I want to say explicitly is we can have the best of our worlds here. Okay. So if my dog's barking, I'm going to sign off.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Sauer.
Yes, Mayor, uh, I, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the proposal. And if there is a second, then we can have further discussion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Sauer, second by Commissioner Wisman. Is there any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Wisman?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to thank Mr. Stottman, uh, putting this together, you know, the, the need for future investigation to fully inform our actions is, has been obvious. And I, I echo Mr. Tippett's comments or Commissioner Tippett's that if we'd had this information a year and a half ago, we would have had a different path forward that, uh, would have been less destructive in terms of our, our collective community and, and more proactive and, and, and much more beneficial. We could have been much further ahead, which has really, shown the need for, for someone versed in preservation principles professionally. Um, but this, um, this proposal will, in, I believe in about one week's time of, uh, onsite collection, uh, better inform what we can do with Fort Hill in the future. We've identified, um, using some modern technology that wasn't available even 10 years ago, um, additional sites and historic features on Fort Hill that, that need to be um, surveyed to formally find out what they are and to document those so that they are not impacted by, by future activities. Not to say that that, um, completely precludes future, uh, use of Fort Hill, but will better inform our, our actions and specifically our, our park plan so that as a community, we can be, um, or advance planning that is fully informed in what we're capable of doing, considering federal and state implications and, and otherwise. So I'm, I'm excited a, about this. I hope that in future commissions um, and the city generally, uh, try to have this level of, of information on, on all projects moving forward. Um, we've had a, uh, an, an unfortunate circumstance for the last year and a half, two years, where we wanted to make knee jerk reactions, um, and, and folks that wanted to make decisions without, you know, full discussion and, and full, um, full information. Um, so this is the right process and, and, um, yeah, thanks.
All right, thank you. Any others? If not, clerk, please call roll.
Sorry. Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Uh, yes, item is adopted and, uh, we, we, we do appreciate the work and.
Mayor, may I have the floor, please, just for a second? I need to clarify that that was a, that was not Mr. Stottman's professional proposal. That was just a synopsis of it, okay? Bullet point by bullet point by bullet point, with some pictures, okay? So that, that needs to be, be reflected in the record, okay?
Thank you. All right, um, number six, review of business license fees.
Mayor, if I can, Commissioner. I asked to, um, to have a consideration for this. Um, some time ago, I brought up a concern about our, our business license fee structure and how it is for, for very, very small businesses, um, at times a barrier, uh, to entry. Um, and I believe it was about six, five or six years ago, our license fee was up from $25 to $60, somewhat arbitrarily, I felt at the time. Um, so in light of, of the pandemic and in thoughts and consideration of trying to help all of our businesses as much as possible, I, I had asked staff to look at, um, what amount of income we receive a year and some other structures around our, our business license fee. I'm aware of, uh, a number of communities, um, some that presented at the League of Cities Conference last year that have went to a fee structure, um, that is, is $0, you know, you, you're to, uh, get a business license. Um, and then in theory, that makes a And then, in theory, that makes a lot more sense to me because you're, you're paying a fee to be able to pay taxes to the city, which, which I think is an obstacle at times. And then in working with some very small businesses, coordinating events and things around the community, I, I find that is a hurdle quite often. But I'd asked staff to, to see if currently we, we prorate the first year's fee for a new business and apply that to their business licenses the, the subsequent year. So the, the $60 fee that is current is applied to the, the next year's business license, I believe I have that correct. When, when a business comes in and gives us a license, I thought, could we possibly do that for all businesses for the next year? Beginning of, of the new year coming up soon, that may not be a lot of money for most businesses, but for, for some very small businesses, you know, $60 or the $150 itinerant merchant license, which is another consideration, but that, that might be some, some additional level of help. I'm not sure if we have any of our finance staff. I know one of them maybe not with us that can provide some basis of, of the level of income we receive off those business licenses every year. But I've been trying consistently to think of ways to help our, our local businesses as much as possible. Ms. Boyd is with us.
Yes, she's here. So Commissioner Wisman, did you want to ask Ms. Boyd a question?
One moment.
Sorry, you're setting off my phone for some reason. Yeah, if, Ms. Boyd, you were pulling the amount of fees that, what's the revenue that we receive off business license fees? The $60 fee per year and any other information you could give us about our license fee structure?
Well, so I also think that Commission, I'm sorry, City Manager, Mr. Russell spoke with David as well. So please, Tommy, correct me if I'm wrong on anything. So if we had all of our active businesses pay the $60, which is the minimum amount they would be required to pay through their, through their net profit tax returns, or the 1.95%, but the minimum is $60 for any of them. Tommy, did David say roughly it could be around $250,000 because we have over 4,000 active business accounts? So it's, you know, it's, it's a nice chunk of change, it's a quarter of a million dollars. And then also Commissioner Wisman, I'm sorry, my phone keeps going, I have to keep unlocking my phone. So the, those regulatory licenses that I think you were referring to, I think the $150 license is one of those. David gave me that amount this morning, and it's not a big, huge amount. The total amount that could possibly be collected there is roughly $9,000. So it's not a big amount for those in total for a year. But, you know, we're looking at 250 on the $60 amount. And, and like I said, that's collected through the net profit tax returns that they do each year. So, and Tommy may have something to add, Mr. Russell, sorry, may have something to add that I am not aware of if he spoke with David today. I was in an eight-hour CPE today, it was a lot of fun, so.
Commissioner Wisman has arrived, they, the, the business gets back the first $60 the second year. Generally, a business has to make a little less than $3,500. It said $60 or 1.95% of that tax. So a little less than three grand and it's only $60. Anything more than that, it goes to 1.95%. I did not realize that we had so many open business accounts, you know, 4,200, which, and in today's age of capital is quite a bit of money moving forward. So the only issues is, is how we would implement that, whether we went to our software company or something like that, if that's your all's wish. The other thing, the other license that we were talking about, Ms. Ross, can I, can I talk about that? We were going to kind of visit it under the, if we had.
Itinerant merchant license or which license? We can talk about it to the extent that it involves this discussion topic, absolutely.
I think it's okay because it's talking about, you're talking about a fee, right?
A fee.
On business licenses?
It's a regular, sure, yeah, we can, we can talk about it, it's fine.
Okay, so there was a conversation when we have large events downtown and we have a, a large number of vendors that come in, there were some issues there that, you know, a guy selling balloons on the sidewalk probably can't make $150 on that, on his balloons. And we were talking about, we had had discussions about rolling that under the, whoever the organizer was of the event and charging one flat fee that would cover all of those itinerant licenses. Now, some of them are food trucks or some of that thing. But I think that's the way to go as far as itinerant business licenses go for those, for the large events that we have. And that's where I saw the most discrepancy and sometimes the most issues where some of those people are coming in trying to provide things for the public to come and see and do, and then we're, we need to charge them $150. So I think that needs to be addressed.
Mayor, yeah, that, that is a number of my concerns, Mayor. That, that itinerant merchant license has been a barrier, I've seen time and time again. Instead of a vibrant community where we have festivals and, and things, we're, we're turning people away. And my thought is, in concerns, you know, going into the, the new year and the spring, hopefully, we say our prayers that, that COVID will, will be a thing of the past by spring and we can begin a lot of those beneficial community events. But, but from my experience and what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing is that those are barriers for Frankfurt. I remember being in the commission meeting as a, an individual citizen when that itinerant merchant license was brought forward, that it was not quite flushed out, there was concern brought about it then, and it was, it's proven to be a bit of an obstacle rather than the intent of it. But, but more so, my, my thought is just anything that we could possibly do to, to help business right now survive and, and to ideally be a little more business friendly on the broader spectrum as well. And, and I thought, I'm a little, I don't, I was a little concerned about the $250,000 being the level of income. I had asked previously and I thought that the value was around 50,000. So that was a bit surprising to hear today. But I wondered if there was a stomach for providing relief for the businesses in our community by waiving or, or not necessarily waiving, but extending the offer that we have for all brand new businesses to all businesses, that that $60 fee would be applied to your taxed, taxes in the, the coming year. And hopefully, the revenues are up anyway in the, the next year because everyone's going to be out wanting to, to shop and get out of the, the house a little bit, that we might reap the rewards anyhow. But, but maybe it's a little bit more that we could do to help our, our local businesses in some manner, so.
Okay, I think Commissioner Waldridge had her hand up and then Commissioner Sauer.
Yes, and I, I think that this is something that would fall in the same lines of our last meeting that can go over to the interim city manager and Blair for them to find out what's best for our businesses. I know that I brought the coupon booklet, we've been talking about that, I've been on some conversations and discussed that. I think this is something that also could go over to that committee and let them see what is best, what actually helps. I did follow up with Ms. Boyd today on a couple of questions that I had. And it looked to me, Ms. Boyd, if anything has not changed since you and I had our conversation, most businesses are already caught up on this fee. I don't think that there's any that are struggling to pay that fee right now of $60. As far as I'm concerned right now, it seems like most of them are paid. And so it would then go over to our 2021. But, you know, as, as being the city, you know, we want to help our businesses as much as possible. And that is a $250,000 take from our city budget, which I think would put us in a position of losing that. And then some, most of our businesses gaining $60. And I think, to be honest, business owners are looking for more help than $60. And I think that's something where we need to take in consideration. I know I, I did bring up to her the alcohol license, which would, you know, help some of our businesses and things for her to get back with me before the next meeting on what those, what those fees would be. But I think right now, I think when businesses look that we're trying to give them $60 back, I think it's, it's far in between that it's, most businesses can probably afford that $60 right now. And I think they're looking for something bigger to help them. And I think that, again, just as my coupon booklet, I think this is just another way, as Scott, Mr. Tippett, Commissioner Tippett had said, we need to have a goal, we need to set a plan, and this should have been put over with the interim city manager and Blair and them as one of the, maybe the options that we can take in that plan moving forward for our businesses. And I think that they can vet that out to see if that's something businesses would rather have, rather than other options that we have.
Okay, Commissioner Sauer?
Yes, it was, I guess, very coincidental, Commissioner Wisman, that this past weekend I sent a memo to the city manager as well as Ms. Boyd, asking them to take a look at all business fees that we might collect. Now, I stole my idea, not from you, Eric, but from the governor's office when he was talking about any kind of business that served food and eliminating that particular fee. I don't know, Ms. Boyd, if we have such a fee designed, especially for those that serve food or not. At the time at our last meeting, we were all concerned with restaurants of any kind and their survivability. So I don't know if you had had, you know, it was very short notice, Ms. Boyd, but I didn't know if you had a chance to explore that in more detail.
Well, Commissioner Sauer, I don't recall seeing that email, but I may have totally overlooked it, which would be my fault. But to my knowledge, the only other thing I think a, a restaurant may have is the, is some sort of an alcohol license. I know that all of our businesses at a minimum, like I said, do, pay the $60 business license. And then I suppose, Tommy, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Russell, correct me if I'm wrong, sorry, on those food trucks, I think they pay something different. But that's all, that's the only ones I'm aware of. But I can speak further with the, with the finance group tomorrow about it and get, get you guys some additional information. And then also wanted to just briefly say to Commissioner Wisman, I'm wondering if the amount that you thought it might have been, may have been the new businesses, the $60 for some of the new businesses that came in, but not, not all businesses paying the 60. I'm not sure on that, but I would think it would be, it would be definitely more than I think that amount you thought it was, you had thought, you heard it was. So I'm just trying to, to make an assumption on why your amount would necessarily be lower, I'm, I'm not really sure, so.
Okay, did that answer your question, Commissioner Tippett? I mean, sorry. Okay, thank you. I was just making sure, Commissioner Wisman, that, that answered your question?
Oh, me, yeah, for the most part, I've got another comment, but I'll, I'll wait.
Okay, then Commissioner Tippett?
I'm going to weigh in here. I feel like we're, we're flailing about here. I feel like we all, all of us want to do something substantial and something that's real to help our communities and especially our business folks. All of us want to do that, it's unanimous. Still think, you know, we, we have got to come up with some sort of framework where we, where we decide, and I, I like Commissioner Waldridge's original idea. We would decide, and it's, this is really going to bleed over into the next commission because they're going, if we start this, they're going to have to do phases two and three, okay? And I happen to know that the mayor-elect is, is a, is a financial wizard. So he may bring some, a different perspective to this. But we, we've got to identify how much money we can afford to pump back into the community and how best to do that to make it effective, okay? I think we need to, we need to task staff, Mayor, to come up with some sort of outline. And we may not know until the third stimulus package comes. And I'm, I, I keep saying that, but I think it's going to come eventually, but it may not come until the next commission. So then they will be able to, if we start something that's, that's good, then they will be able to keep the, the program going. So I, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say is I think we're just flailing around here without any kind of direction. We need some sort of task force, maybe. We need for Ms. Boyd and the city manager and Ms. Ross to sit down and decide, look, you know, this is what we can safely, you know, reinvest back into the community. And these are the ways we think we should do it to get the most bang for the buck, where that money comes back to us, okay? That, that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to wrestle with here is, is how do we do that effectively?
Commissioner Tippett, are you talking about in addition to the CARES money that we've already received?
Well, there, yes, and there was some, Mayor, there was some talk about us, I mean, this was back in, when the pandemic first hit, you know, we're going, look, we're going to put a substantial amount of money back in the community. And some, some of us were saying, you know, we, we need to put a million dollars in that, okay? And I don't realistically know if that's, I don't know if that's realistic or not.
It's going to be close to that, Commissioner.
Okay, so, but I guess, I guess, Mayor, what I'm trying to say is, is we need some sort of forward, need a way forward to make sure that these funds, we determine how much funding we're going to get put back in the community and how we're going to do it.
Commissioner Waldridge?
I would agree with Commissioner Tippett. I think there needs to be maybe a task force or something that, that all this is vetted through. I think we as commissioners and mayors, we want what's best for our local community. We want what's best for our businesses in Frankfurt. And maybe we have great ideas as individuals and maybe, you know, the community, the business leaders may look at them as Band-Aids. And so I think bringing to the table KCDC, bringing to the table the Chamber, bringing to the table DFI, these organizations to go out and speak with these businesses, who knows who is applying for money, who knows who's struggling, bringing them together on a task force to be able to communicate with those businesses. You know, I know I've talked to a couple of businesses and I'm sure the other commissioners as well as mayor probably have spoken to a few as well. But bringing that together to see what the true need is for our businesses and maybe some of their ideas. As business owners, they know what will help them, they know what is just going to be a Band-Aid. They know what is going to be strategic in them surviving in 2021 and getting to 2021. So I think, you know, I will agree with Tippett there, Commissioner Tippett. I think that we need to get with the interim city manager, you know, Blair Hecker, I think, has been working on some things and just get those organizations together. And as Tippett brought up, bring some goals, bring some ideas and options back to the commission and saying, hey, this is, this is what could help us, this is the financial responsibility of that. Could you do this in us having different options and moving forward? But I think we have to be very strategic, as I was speaking with Ms. Boyd today. You know, technically, you know, there are some businesses that are doing pretty well, even though we, we suspected that they not do so well. But some, some are doing very well for themselves and some are struggling. And we need to figure out what that help looks like for both of those different companies that are doing well and not so well. But we also need to take in consideration that we're really not going to know the blunt force of what's going on with COVID until quarters one and two, technically, until the numbers hit the paper. And so, you know, we have to be very cautious in what we're pushing forward and what money we're pushing out. You know, even with my coupon idea that I had brought up, you know, we've already had discussions that come back to me that maybe it's not a good time to do it right now. You know, people are going to be out buying for business, for Thanksgiving and Christmas already. So maybe we can push that off until maybe a February idea, when people aren't doing as much business, but it'll still try to bring them out to spend that money into the stores as maybe, you know, a love and unity idea. You know, I think that's, we need to make sure we're getting the right people at the table that know what's going on in these businesses, that knows what they truly need, and then we can make that decision as a board to be able to do that. But again, like I said, these numbers aren't going to be real until quarter one and quarter two. So we have to be very cautious in what we're spending in between now and then to help businesses and making sure we are helping them in the way that they need help for survival for 2021.
Okay, Commissioner Sauer?
I agree with Commissioner Waldridge when she talks about bringing in experts in the area, which are, which is DFI, the Chamber of Commerce, KCDC, to match our own experts and Ms. Boyd, the city. and Ms. Boyd, the city manager, as well as the city attorney. They are going to know right now, Patricia, they're going to know right now what can work and what can, whatever that is, that can bring the best bang for the buck. Why? Because they have already been through the CARES experience with every business in town. And it could be a low, a no interest loan or it could be something else. I don't know. But those three experts wedded to our three experts can do the job and get back with us. But Patricia, we can't wait till February. We may need to make the decision as soon as possible because some of those businesses may not make it to February. I'm here to tell you. And the food industry is, is one of those that is most difficult to manage because no more outdoor environment for raise, for extending the number of people that can visit your establishment. We need it now, but we need expert opinion as to how to do it best. Thank you.
Thank you. We're getting a little bit far here, so I need to bring it back. Let's, we're talking about business license fees. It seems like there's a lot to, to go back and, and look at. It seems like we probably should go back and, and do a, another comprehensive view on this and, and put it on at a, a future meeting. Commissioner Wiseman, I'll give you the last word on it if you.
Yeah, Mayor, that was, you know, that was essentially my goal in, in wanting to have this conversation was we've already set our, our taxing rate for, for employees. And the governor has waived alcohol fees and some of those things at the state level. As a city, we don't have a lot of other lateral ability to impact business except for our licensing and our tax structure. So we're a month and a half from the, the new year. I thought it at time for us to, to fully evaluate that. It was just very fitting that after adding this to the agenda, right before I came up to my office, a lady who has a, a small business here in the city that has done quite well for a number of years, hasn't been able to run that side hobby business at all. So all of the revenues and ability she's been able to, to build up over the last few years, she's starting back at zero. And I realized for a lot of those very, very small businesses, a $60 fee structure is a barrier to, to getting back up and going. But I also realized that we can't create a tax break for the very small very easily and not help, you know, not do the same for, for all businesses. So that was more my goal was just to create a conversation and, and begin looking for what we can do before the beginning of the year, when all these things start reviving and renewing to help our, our local businesses. And specifically, my mind keeps going to those little micro businesses. I saw a statistic recently where, where something like 50% of the millennial generation have a side business to make ends meet and to make revenues. And we all know people that have those craft and hobby businesses out of their garage that they supplement their income with, that they've not been able to do this year. So I'm, I'm just very cognizant that we need to evaluate that fee structure. And I'm, I'm very aware that it was already an issue prior to COVID. So I, I thought after that, we have a conversation about it and, and ask our staff to, to review something applicable that would be impactful and evaluate the current system that we have fully. So just like the, you know, the arbitrary move from $25 to $60 several years ago that probably hurt a few little businesses, I, I think we need to go back and, and take a look at that and review it before the end of next month so that if we do something impactful, we can adopt it for the new year.
Okay, City Manager Russell, I'm sorry, Commissioner Waldridge or who was it?
Yes. Yes, I, I just had a quick statement. I just wanted to say, you know, I'm, I'm not privy to this, you know, I'm not a expert in this area, but I do think that we could go back, send this back to the interim manager, let them work with that strategic group and let them get together and, and bring back ideas to our group. And this could be one of the suggestions and options that they could look and see if it's viable. Or maybe even, you know, looking to see in a single month, you know, that, you know, net profit fee for each business, that we waive that, you know? There could be different options. Again, I'm not an expert, but I think turning this over, giving this to the interim city manager and the strategic group, I think, is what we need to do and let them bring us options they can vet out in what ways that it helps businesses at the same time allows us to continue moving forward. We can't forget that we are the city of Frankfurt and we have to continue moving forward to keep our employees and our city moving forward as well financially. But also we want to help those businesses because we need those businesses to stay here. So I just recommend that we just let this go over to the interim city manager, let them handle it and bring back options to us. Maybe early December, if that gives them time to look over options or maybe at the next voting meeting, if they can get that done.
If that's a motion, I second it.
We don't need a motion. We're just talking about business license fees. One of the reasons that business license fees exist is to prevent, part of it is, is, some people may agree, disagree with this, but the reason that the city did it was because of the itinerant, the vendors that, that come into town and are just here for one time. And you've got businesses, the brick and mortar businesses that, that pay way more in taxes and employ a number of people in our community. And we don't want to see it pop up on a sidewalk in front of, like on Broadway. I know some of the folks downtown expressed concern about having the food trucks park right in front of Broadway. They don't really mind food trucks being someplace else, but right in front of businesses that sell pretty much the same things. And the, the itinerant merchants, vendors are selling things at a, at a lower cost. So there's, that, that was one of the reasons we looked at that. I'm not saying that doesn't need to be changed, but just, just giving you the history of it. Mr. Russell, I'll give it to you and then we'll go to the new discussion tentative agenda.
Thank you, sir. So I was just going to say, I apologize to you all. I had a conversation late this afternoon to get a little bit of information, just to make me dangerous. So I will address that with finance and Ms. Boyd and, and concern a comprehensive plan. We are well on our way to fleshing one out. Ms. Ross getting on me very much. I will say that we will bring you all back something for business recommendation, business license recommendations as soon as we get it done.
All right, thank you. Next item, then, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Discussion of tentative agendas. Anybody have any items on the tentative agenda that need to discuss?
Fine.
All right, if not, so let's see. Next item of business is a juror because we don't have any closed executive sessions. I believe, Wiseman first, Commissioner Wiseman motion and Commissioner Tippett second. Any discussion seen none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed, like aye. All right, clearly the ayes have it. Thank you, everyone, very much.